Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Leturno?
Here.
Maroon?
Here.
Shertel?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Onto item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through P.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. And with that, we have the appointment of Mr. Allinson to planning and zoning as an alternate. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item five, which is the public question and answer period. Public Q and A going once. Mr. Stancuna. Name an address for the record.
Uh, Zerro Stancuna, 18 old Village Circle. Um, for these questions, is this for the sheet on here?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Is this for the expenditures?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
For the, um, motion being passed. Is that for the line, uh, 3A to 3P?
The consent agenda has passed.
Okay.
As it-
And then that's where you have questions from the floor about the, um, gentleman that-
This is the public question and answer period. You can ask us anything about town business that, uh, you might see fit.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, that's all. I wasn't sure if that was from those lines 3A to... But yes, we've got a, um, few things going on in town. Uh, there's residents that are getting, um, assistant living with letters from the state and the town. Their rent going up 60% at these, uh, residential areas in town due to, um, state cuts or Wallingford cuts or whatever's going on. And we want to know what the town of Wallingford and what, um, the council and the mayor are gonna do, or going to do about these people that just got these letters late, starting July 10th. And the li- the letters are backdated July 5th. And these rents are going up like 60%. So are you guys gonna like give some kind of assistance program for these people? I mean, that's, that's a pretty shocking letter to get in the mail and financial shock also, and no preparation.
While that certainly sounds shocking, it's the first that I think any of us are hearing of this. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure from where they were generated. Um, and if somebody could get me a copy of one of those letters, I'd be happy to look into it and figure out what the issue is.
Well, I have a gentleman next to me, uh, that can let you know right now that he did get a letter.
Okay.
He's one of the people in town. And, uh, here's Mr. Brian Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Name an address for the record.
Brian Doyle, 25, South Side Terrace. I'm just saying that, um, we got a letter from, uh, Ron Canaly, I believe his name is. Uh, he's in charge of the, um, housing authority. Not, not in charge of housing authority, but he's in charge of sending out bills or whatever. And, uh, I got a bill like, I don't know the actual percentage, but I don't have the letter with me unfortunately, but the rent went up like 60%. And that's a lot. I mean, if you're gonna like raise rents gradually, that's one thing. But if you're gonna raise it like 60% or whatever, that seems like a lot for people who are like vulnerable and, you know, having problems and they're below the poverty line or whatever. And it seems like, uh, a lot. Now, it's my understanding that's because the state budget, they didn't agree on the budget. But it was my understanding that Malloy was supposed to reinforce the budget temporarily, just to keep the government going until the two parties could get together. But apparently that hasn't happened, according to this letter that Ron sent me. So I'm not sure where we're going with this.
Mr. Doyle, if you could get a copy of that letter, letter to the clerk's office, I'll do what I can to look into it.
Thank you very much, man.
Certainly.
Thank you. And I have a couple other questions. With other towns across the state, they're having all these big vendors come and play, these, uh, rock bands, soft rock, whatever you want to call them. Um, Hamden has concerts every weekend for free for the residents. And not just some generic bands, but I'm talking high, you know, vendor bands with big names. And I don't know why the town of Wallingford hasn't been doing that, especially that we have this large surplus of money. And it'd be great for the residents, for something to come back to them. Get some big vendors here. Get a Bruce Springsteen or something, uh, every week. Marshall Tucker, every week there's somebody playing famous in Hamden right next door. And that brings in a lot of revenue for the town also. That brings in people, also the residents. And Archie Moores and the other local businesses could make out great with a, you know, vendor coming in like that every week, plus for the town. Um, especially you guys are saying how we have this oversurplus of money. So might as well try to spend it now before it's gone or whatever happens. Um, any words about that from the council or the mayor? I mean, why haven't we been having these promotional bands like Hamden does, New Haven? And these are cities that are impoverished financially and yet Wallingford has a lot of money. And we should have these vendor shows for the people, the residents of town.
I think within your statement is the answer to your question. But, uh, we are all listening to you and will certainly consider what you have to say.
Are you gonna try to do that this summer?
Nope, because the budget's already been passed and the Twilight Toons bands have already been contracted.
Okay, well, if we could do that for next summer and have it prepared for the residents, get some big vendors here every week. I mean, not some Joe Schmo bands. Get some Bruce Springsteen's, Marshall Tucker bands, you know, some good popular music. I mean, you guys say you have a lot of money and we already lost Bristol Myers. So what else are we gonna lose? Uh, that was my other question. What are we doing to try to keep these businesses that been long time paying tax revenue for the town of Wallingford to help this surplus way up? I mean, we've got the biggest company, one of the biggest companies in Connecticut leaving Wallingford. Uh, Bristol Myers probably one of your biggest contributor for tax revenue for the town. And we lost them, they're gone. So what I want to know is what are you guys doing to try to keep these businesses in town, keep the revenue going up? Because with the way these deficits are going, I mean, a couple weeks ago, I was up here on this microphone, and there's no summer jobs. You look at the TV, that night there was, when I spoke, June 27th, there was something in 10 o'clock news about no summer jobs for kids. And constantly every night, there's something on the TV about these opiate problems and drug problems across the state. And I mean, I haven't heard anything or seen you guys do anything about it. So, you know, you're gonna wait till something goes downhill hard and then it's gonna be too late to buckle back up. I would say try to do something this summer, even if it's not with the budget. Try to, you know, keep these teenagers, um, you know, on a good path and try to help out the residents in the town. And you got people getting letters backdated July 5th. And, you know, saying that their rent's going up 60%. I mean, these are very shocking, very bad news. And you guys really need to take this seriously. I mean, this is very serious. We're in a bad economical downfall. We already lost Bristol Myers. What else are we losing? And next year, I'm sure you won't have a big surplus of money the way we're going. So, I mean, you guys gotta really stop this, you know, big renting stuff and arguing about the money and, and just start really spending it on the residents in town.
I, I can tell you that, um, certainly as long as I've been chairman on the council, that, um, I've worked with Tim Ryan in the Economic Development Office. And, uh, the mayor and Mr. Ryan and I and some of the department heads have gone and met with businesses who are in town to find out what we can do to keep them happy and keep them in town. Uh, I know Mr. Ryan is aware of the inventory of vacant spaces in town or land where businesses can move into. And he's a resource. And I've certainly, uh, used his knowledge and his abilities to try and, uh, recruit business into town. So we do have a very active Economic Development Commission, which is working very hard to keep, uh, taxpaying businesses in the town of Wallingford.
And what about losing Bristol Myers?
Bristol Myers left the state. They didn't leave Wallingford.
Well, that's Wallingford, Connecticut is where they were making us revenue.
We're, we're just the unfortunate victim of Bristol Myers' choice to leave the state.
And then aren't there all kinds of legal battles going on between the town of Wallingford and Bristol Myers?
No.
No types of legal things going on?
Actually, I think there is a, a land use, there, there is a land use appeal pending and a tax appeal pending. I apologize.
There's a lot of money being spent on that. So, you know, we gotta figure out what we're doing up there with you guys and start taking it seriously. That's what I'm saying as a resident. I've never seen so much comical acts going on up there. And, you know, it's election year. I'm really hoping for a change up there. And just very disappointed as a resident. And there's a lot of people I've talked to across town that just are not happy with what's going on. They don't feel you guys are doing enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I'll close the... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Tadda, name an address for the record, please.
Christina Tadda, 751 North Farms Road. Um, I was also the vice chair of the Charter Commission, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission at all. But, um, I was away at your last meeting. Um, and I know you were speaking about charter issues, so hopefully it's okay to address that now. Um, I just wanted to say I was a little bit upset about, uh, the discussion about the Public Utilities Commission. And I, I debated whether even to bring it up or not. Um, but once again, there's an editorial in today's Record Journal, so it seems like this topic, uh, just keeps on going. Um, I just thought it was important to note, um, for the public, since the public will be voting on the charter, that, um, that issue was voted on twice. All commissioners were present at both meetings. It was unanimous vote the first time to not add commissioners. And the second vote, uh, three commissioners changed their mind and ended up being an eight-three vote. Um, I know some things that were said, um, at the meeting, um, like maybe we should have just added it to the ballot or, um, you know, we didn't listen to the council. I can assure you, um, and the public that we definitely listened to every opinion, um, to every side of the argument. Um, but we did not just add things to the ballot if we did not feel that they were a positive change for Wallingford. And that's, um, at least in my opinion, that is why that, that did not make it. And, um, I would just urge the public to really read our minutes because I think that the arguments were spelled out very clearly on, on both sides. And there were valid points on both sides. But in the end, um, the choice was to not add any commissioners. And I just think that, you know, we didn't have the luxury of having our, our meetings televised. And so, um, you know, I would hate for the public to, to only have the, the council's opinion. Um, although I certainly respect, um, all of your opinions, I think that it's important also to look at, um, the arguments on both sides. And really, the only way to do that is to read our minutes. Um, so I would just urge everyone to do that. Um, so I guess I don't really have a question, but more of a comment. Um, and I thank all of you also for, um, for, um, thanking us for, for our work. And, uh, I'll see you soon when we talk about the ballot question. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the public? There being none, I close the public question and answer period, move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding the agreement between the Town of Wallingford Board of Education and the Wallingford Health Service Professional Association for a contract from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2019. Evening. Just remind us who you are for the record. Chair?
Uh, good evening. Roxanne McKay, Board of Ed Chair.
Sal Menzo, Superintendent of the Public School District. Um, so thank you very much for having us here this evening. Uh, this union represents 14 members and we are presenting to you a two-year contract this evening, um, for your review and, and questions.
For the benefit of the, those watching, if you could, uh-
I'll go through a high-level summary. Um, so there's a two-year contract, as I mentioned. The first year of the contract is a 1.9% general wage increase just for the top step. So the employees at the top step, which is, uh, approximately 11 members of the union. Um, the remainders, the remaining three members would receive a step increase in the first year. The second year of the contract is a 1.8% increase, um, only to the top stop, top step members. And then the other members, the three members would be moving on step for the second year. Uh, the total cost estimate for the two years of the contract initially is $37,253. The, um, there's an adjustment that would be made of approximately $10,341 because we have negotiated, like we've done with other unions, a flat rate for the waiver. Um, in the past, it was a percentage of the cost of the health insurance at the time. There are three members of the union that participate in the waiver. So the savings for the first year would be $7,300. And the second year, there'd be a $3,000 savings. So again, the total cost, when you take out the waiver savings for the two-year contract, would be $26,912. Um, the HSA, which this group had moved over to in the past, uh, we've made some minor adjustments that the staff would receive 25% of their payment for the HSA in July and the remaining 75% in January, um, just because we felt, in consultation with our insurance consultant and in just past experience, that we wanted to maintain that split over that period of time. The premium cost sharing would go up from 20%, or excuse me, from 19% to 20% in each of the two years of the contract. And then there were some minor language changes regarding retirement. Um, and also, uh, we got the excess tax, uh, excess tax language that we, uh, had negotiated for, um, in the contract.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments from the council? There being none, I go out to the public. Questions and comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make clear, um, when did the negotiations start on this agreement?
This contract started negotiations, I would, it was, it was actually, um, earlier in the year and it progressed. It was, it was, um, it was a constant process. They, this actually ended in mediation in, in June. So it was probably about, about three, about April, probably three, four months ago.
Okay. And most of the negotiation occurred prior to all the issues we're well aware of with the state of Connecticut.
Before anything was finalized.
I just want to make that clear.
Correct.
It was finalized prior to us knowing that there's no state budget.
Correct.
All right. No comments from the public. Counselor Leturno?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract, um, between the Town of Wallingford, Wallingford Board of Education and the Wallingford, um, Health Service Professional Association as presented.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Sullivan. Uh, discussion by the council on the motion. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Maroon?
No.
Shertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next on the agenda is item seven, discussion and possible action regarding draft explanatory text and the number of charter ballot questions. Um, we do have, we did receive, um, proposed explanatory text from Attorney Small. Uh, we also received, uh, proposed questions from Counselor Sol- uh, Counselor Fishbein. And so I open it up to the council to, uh, discussion and/or motions. I guess I will start by saying that, um, I think that the quality and variety of changes that are proposed by the commission, um, represent a good cleanup of the document, um, represent good management recommendations for, uh, the way the town should be run. Um, and I think that, uh, there's nothing to be lost by making this proposed charter a single ballot question. But that is just my opinion. Counselor Fishbein?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, Janice's memo took me a little by surprise. The sentence that, uh, we had been revised, the Charter Revision Commission supported a one-question ballot. Um, and I guess to Janice, you know, I went back and looked at, at minutes. I didn't see that. Where does that come from?
Oh, I thought that was discussed, but they could speak. That's my recollection. But if I'm wrong, um,
Okay.
They're here, some of them are here, they can correct me. But I thought that was the consensus of the commission, that it be a one-ballot question. That was their preference, but they know the decision wasn't theirs.
The first that I had heard of that, and I think I've read everything, was your memo. So I don't know-
No, I mentioned it at the last meeting, too.
Okay.
Your meeting.
Maybe I wasn't listening.
You might not have been, you know.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, there are members of the commission here, um-
That was my understanding, but if I, if-
Cause I'd be interested to know why.
I'm sorry?
I'd be interested to know from one of the commission members why. Cause we never discussed it with them. Um,
Because it's not their authority to do it. And I did make that clear to them. But my, my recollection is that the, they thought that it should be a one-ballot question. But some of them are here to speak. And if I'm remembering that incorrectly, then I'll stand corrected if they say so.
Okay. I just, we had a very lengthy discussion at our last meeting about one question or multiple questions.
Yeah.
And, and I would rather, you know, if we're gonna have a discussion, there's people that actually came up with the document. I'd like them to be part of the, you know, the more that participate, I think the more that are happy with this. So I do prefer, um, the questions to be individual, as I stated at the last meeting. And, um, you know, I did submit something that contains questions as well as proposed explanatory text. Um, Janice, you did contact me today and, and suggest a few changes. And I'd just like to orally mention those, um, at this point. Um, with regard to the explanatory text for proposed question three, um, Janice pointed out to me, um, that the environmental planner is already in the charter. Um, I had stated that neither of the positions were. So I would propose that the, um, second sentence that starts however, would strike neither of those and add, um, the town planner. The sentence would state, however, the town planner position is mentioned in the charter, um, to clarify that. Then to go down to the sentence that says currently-
I think you just stated the opposite.
Okay.
You just, you just said the town planner is in the charter. It's-
Oh, okay. I added not, is not.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, thank you. Is not mentioned in the charter. So then down below where it says currently, um, I would replace that with, on the other hand, the environmental planner is appointed by the Inland Wetlands War Courses Commission. And then the last sentence, um, just to, to work that out. This proposed charter revision would include reference to a town planner position with both positions being appointed by the mayor utilizing a classified service system. Um, I think that addresses the concern with regard to that paragraph. And the only other thing was, in the proposed explanatory text for the, uh, fire marshal, the second sentence, um, I put fire chief twice. It should say, this proposed charter revision would authorize the fire chief to appoint the fire marshal in accordance, and so on and so forth. Um, so that was a typographical. And I think, Janice, that would address your concerns.
Well, that's, those are the two that I mentioned. I mean, if this list of questions were to be, um, chosen, I mean, I have, I would have tweaked a few more paragraphs. And I, not in favor of your question number one, I think it's, it's too simple. But I just, um, instead of giving you an edit, I mentioned those, those two things that were incorrect. The other things I would just, uh, I didn't like the first question. And there were some wordsmithing that I would have done with some of the other ones. So those would be my comments.
Yeah, I would, you know, personally, I would have no problem with, you know, coming back at this after wordsmithing.
Right.
Just understanding that the explanatory text for proposed question one, I adopted your entire thing with-
Yeah, I'm talking about the question. I, I think the question is too simple. That's, I think it needs to say more. If that's, if that's the way the council decides to go, then I think it just, it would need some tweaking is my, how I would look at it.
And I, yeah, I, I looked at the ballot that we did in 2009. I thought the questions were quite long, so I tried to come up with quicker things. But I got it.
I understand. I just think that if you're going to- They were too long because they sought to cover everything. And that's why I, I lean the other way. Because I don't, I don't think your first question says enough to encompass everything that's not specified in the other questions. And that's my concern if you separate the questions, is are you covering everything that you're asking the voters to vote on? As opposed to a one question saying, there it all is, yes or no? That's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. You know, because there was criticism of the questions that we did last time, too many and too long. But I, you know, and that's why I have reservations about your first question, is because I do believe that if you're gonna have multiple questions, it's very important that you not miss saying that there's something in particular that was changed. And that's, that's my concern with that. So if you do multiple questions, I think the first one needs to be beefed up. This-
I would tend to agree. I, I did skim through the proposal visions and tried to lump in my head, you know, different things in it. Um, but if you wanted to add to it, I would certainly be open to whatever you, you suggest. So, um, you know, generally, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. You know, I'd like to go forward with individual questions. I don't know if you want a motion to that effect so that we-
Well, before we move in that direction, um, you, you did say that, given the opportunity, you'd like to hear from the commission. And I do note that the chairman of the commission and the vice chairman of the commission are in the gallery. And I, I'll offer them the opportunity to come forward, sit at the table across from us and, um, offer their perspective on Attorney Small's perception that perhaps the commission thought one question was a, uh, good idea. Small's perception that perhaps the commission thought one question was a good idea. For the record, if you could just remind us who you are.
My name is Steve Knight.
Christina Tatta.
And you're sitting there in your capacity, Mr. Knight, as chairman of the Charter Revision Commission.
Yeah.
Ms. Tatta is your, in your capacity, is vice chairman of the commission, and I just give you the opportunity to address Attorney Small's perception or misperception.
I, I could maybe just say that, that over the course of a year and plus, we've probably had two or 300 conversations with Attorney Small. She's been a guide throughout this process, a very steady hand, dealing with matters that we're, most of us, not being in government full-time, are unfamiliar with. Over the course of that time, it was, I'm sure that if we didn't say it specifically, the aim of our charter, our charter commission, and I think I could speak for all of us, was to produce a document that modernized the town charter for the first time in 28 years, and included some changes in the management structure that should have been, could have been done back in 2009, had the, had the charter revision been accepted. A lot of the work we did, we cribbed straight from that 2009 work, and the document we produced, and I think the philosophy that we, we had, was that we were going to give the voters of Wallingford a document that did not contain any severe, for want of a better term, changes in the authority structure of the town government. We weren't there to change longstanding practices that had worked, and we weren't there to make changes for their own sake. I think we were very successful, and I believe all 11 of us felt that that was our main goal, always keeping in mind, as we worked, that 2009, the commission, yeah, the commission did a ton of work, all for naught, and that the charter that we live under and work under and govern our town under is 28 years old and needed updating. Having said that, we presented you with a document that we do not feel, and I, I'm speaking for me, Christina and the other members that are here could speak for themselves, but I think we wanted to produce a document that was, was void of the kind of controversy that caused the 2009 charter revisions to be rejected by the voters. And for that, and for that reason, I think that the sentiment in the room, if not specifically spoken to, I, I'm confident that I could say that the, the philosophy was that we produced a document that could be presented to the voters in one question. There was nothing so controversial that it needed to be singled out for separate consideration by the voters.
Thank you. Ms. Tatta, did you want to speak as well?
Um, yeah, I can, I can just add, obviously, I, I agree with what Steve said, and, and especially that last part, where I, I don't really think that there's any one change that we made, where somebody, I maybe, there may be a small, you know, small population that might not agree with the one thing we did, but I think for the most part, our work really modernized the charter, brought things up to date that needed to be brought up to date, and, and as Chairman Knight was saying, there wasn't really anything that was hugely controversial, so I'm comfortable with putting it as one question, and I was looking at kind of ease of voting and what might, what might be easiest for the voters to, to, to be able to decipher, and I, I was looking at the 2009 ballot questions, and, for example, the, the last one, I mean, it's, it's a full paragraph. When you're in the voting booth for one question to be that long, I mean, it's parts A through I with a short introductory sentence, I mean, that's, I just think when you're in the voting booth, that's overwhelming, and I'm sure that a lot of people did and could potentially vote no, simply because they're overwhelmed by just looking at that, and I know if I were, you know, to be overwhelmed by a question or not fully understand a question, I would certainly vote no, because I think no change is better than a change that you don't really understand, and so I would hate for that to happen, you know, if, if we have a lot of questions and they're very cumbersome and, and hard to understand, where even an educated voter might be just so overwhelmed that they would just vote no, because they don't really understand what they're choosing. The other thing we were looking at, and I think this came up in a meeting, the current charter was one question, and it's actually, it's on page 40 of the charter. The question read simply, shall the revisions to the charter of the town of Wallingford approved by the town council on August 24th, 1989 be adopted, yes or no? And that, that did pass, and that's the charter we have now. So I think for, for ease of voting, and again, because not one subject seemed so far out there that people might agree, it would certainly be my preference to have it as, as one question.
Thank you. Counselor Chertel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, Christina, thank you. Jonathan, Pat, thank you for all your, all your work. And Counselor Fishbein, I think you did a really nice job with these questions, so I want to, I want to thank you. It's curious that every first letter, it's P U C, P U C, but anyway, maybe I'm just seeing it wrong. No, you did a nice, you did a nice job with these. That being said, I'm, I'm open on this. I guess I agree with everything the two of you just said. I'm, I'm trying to find the issue in these questions, these six questions, that needs to be separated for the voters, you know, whether it's gender, racial, language, or procedural language, I mean, where is the issue here that we would need to break these questions up? I don't see it, I'm open if there's an argument for it, I just haven't heard it yet, and, and maybe you could tell me, because you had numerous public hearings, you had three?
We had three.
Three public hearings, I was an avid reader of your minutes, so I, I read your minutes every, every month. I don't recall seeing anybody from the public come to any of those meetings, but you, you can correct me, on any of these issues.
No, you are, you are correct on that.
Okay.
I think possibly the environmental planner.
Well, there was a comment at one of our meetings, like, a month ago, but.
Yeah.
You had meetings since last year, last, last May, and I don't recall, so I, anyway, that was, I don't know, I mean, we have, as a council, there are two parts in this process where we put our stamp on this, when we appointed you to the commission, and now at the end, when we decide how it appears on the ballot. So I just feel like, as a council, now we're endorsing your work, and, and how we present your work is part of that endorsement.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm leaning toward one question, because I just feel like that reflects the work, the great work that you did. But I'm open, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you guys again.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Evening.
My first question, was it the commission's charge to propose using a single ballot question?
No, I mean, that's not our charge at all. It wasn't included in our charge.
I'm just asking.
No, I'm just saying, John, from a, from a procedural standpoint, it wasn't part of our charge, and I, I don't think there was a formal discussion on it.
Okay.
That's not, not to interrupt you, but that's not to say that over the course of 15 months, that, as I said before, there was a general consensus among the members, spoken or unspoken, that what our, what our goal was, is to produce a document without the controversy that would necessitate singling out certain aspects of it. And that's, if, if, if Attorney Small deduced that, that we are in favor of one question, I, I think that's not, I think that's probably quite accurate, whether or not it was reflected in the minutes or our discussion.
Okay, that was.
It was not, it was not, certainly not part of our charge.
Okay. That was out of my own curiosity, because it goes back quite a way, and I wasn't sure if you were charged with coming to us later on, Steve, if you.
Okay.
You let me finish, I would have gotten there. But that's okay. Look, we go back to 2009, and it was chaos, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit you between the eyes, because you and I both know why that failed. It was all around garnering enough votes to override a mayoral veto, and not just a mayoral veto, but that mayor's veto. That's what it was about, and everybody knows that. I am a proponent of going to one question. I walked the streets, because it was an election year, at Celebrate Wallingford, and I said at this last meeting, opponents of the hard work the Charter Commission did that year failed because people were lying to the public about how to vote. And I'll say it clearly, I'm not going to mince words, there were falsehoods, and people said, you know what, I'd rather vote against it than have it changed, because I don't understand it. And I tried to track down several people and talk to them, right after this person talked to them that was negative about it, and tried to change their mind, but they could sum up their statement in like several words, and it took me about 20 minutes to undo the damage they did. So it was very difficult to do, and I think if we get down to using Counselor Fishbein's proposal, we're going to have chaos once again. People are going to be confused. We, we see the number of people that vote during elections, it's, it's a very small percentage of those registered voters. They're looking to run in, run out, they're not looking to read through something like this. I think it's important that we put the information out, certainly, using our town resources where they can read up, and they should be.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Reading about what this means, because there's nothing better than an informed voter. So everyone has to do the due diligence to understand this, but to expect them to go in and read this, if they haven't read it, and I know if we did go with Counselor Fishbein's proposal, this would be placed in the paper or on the town website, people would have an opportunity to review it. It doesn't work that way, though. So I think to give a fair representation to what you do, and I'm not going to throw it out as a proposal this time, but I came up with just a simple question, shall the amendments of the Wallingford Town Charter, excuse me, shall the amendments of the Town, of the Wallingford Town Charter recommended by the Charter Revision Commission and approved by the Wallingford Town Council be adopted? Very simple. No, I'm not making, I said I'm not making a motion yet. I'm not.
Twist his arm.
I, I'm not done talking. God, why don't you sit down there with Steve? Ever.
We're supposed to be having a discussion, that's why I'm saying, make a motion, we'll talk about it. Up here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm not done yet. I, I may, I'm not done yet. Don't try to throw this train off the track. Okay, all right. But to me, you've worked hard, and.
Thank you.
I know that there was frustration from 2009, but you know what, it's really the voters' decision, and I know there was a lot of people that were let down, that put a lot of hours into this, but that's democracy, right? Unfortunately, I think the scale was tilted by the misinformation that was out there, and I think, Steve, you would probably agree with that. It was an uphill battle to get people to truly understand what they were voting on, and why it was good for the town at the time.
I would also add that, that, that there were so many questions, and the, the, the degree of, of change in some of the questions to the structure of the government, and yet there were other questions that were very innocuous and very easy to accept.
Right.
I think that there was general confusion as to what was what, and I, I think the voters were frankly confused by seven questions.
Yeah, I would agree. I know, Christine, you weren't here, but I did acknowledge the hard work. You were off in Florida with.
Yes.
Mickey and Goofy or something. So I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And, and I know your earlier comments at the public question-answer period, look, I disagree with staying with three, and I do it professionally, and for business reasons, because in the environment I work in, groups of, of, that are working on projects are normally between five and seven people, and that goes, everything from Six Sigma Lean Management, we try to get five to seven people, all professionals who understand the job, so that's why I professionally disagreed with staying with three. But, Mr. Testa, here is the moment of truth. I'll make a motion that there be one question on the ballot, and that question shall read, shall the amendments of the Wallingford Town Charter recommended by the Charter Revision Commission and approved by the Wallingford Town Council be adopted?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Point?
I did ask you if you were going to entertain a motion. I did go to you with that question. You then deferred to the leadership of the commission to answer a question, and then gave the floor to someone else without answering my question, because I was prepared to make a motion, so.
You, you've been historically very good about letting me know when I've taken your time away from you at the moment that I do it, and I really was under the impression that you were done speaking at the moment.
No, I, I, if we want to roll back the tape, I concluded my comments with, that's basically all I had, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion, and then, you know, to move this thing along, I think that's exactly what I said, as a matter of fact, and then you said, you know, I'd like to hear from, I mean, I'll just, I just, procedurally, that's where we are.
Well, I don't think there was anything procedurally inappropriate about his motion, and if you.
Whatever.
Would like to continue to challenge me on that, you're free to do that.
No, I, I will not, I, I did not attempt to pull back the floor when it was pulled out from under me, and out of respect for the chair, and we are where we are, so.
Your characterization, while followed by out of respect for the chair, certainly wasn't respectful. I, I, I don't think I pulled the floor out from under you, but I guess we can agree to disagree on that point. There is a motion on the floor. I would ask the town attorney if the motion should include the date upon which the council approved the draft of the charter.
I was just thinking that, I think that might be a good idea.
I, if I have a second that has that information, would you like me to read that, Janice? Because I do have two.
Do I know the date?
Or can we just add the date to that?
Add the date.
The clerk is asking that you read your motion again, so if you could read your motion again a little more slowly and include the date the council adopted or approved the draft.
Of course.
That'd probably be helpful.
All right, thank you. Shall the amendments of the Wallingford Town Charter recommended by the Charter Revision Commission and approved by the Wallingford Town Council on July 11th, 2017? Oh, June, I'm sorry, yes, apologize. Be adopted. You're welcome. Barbara, I can give this to you in writing, too, if you'd like it. Okay.
I think it should be amendments to, it said amendments of, it should be, or revisions to.
Counselor Sullivan, would you accept?
I would accept that.
Revision instead of amendment?
Yes, that's fine.
Revisions to. Are we, Madam Clerk, are we good with our motion?
I'll bring it to you. I'll bring it to you, Barbara.
Counselor Sullivan, are you, well, you made a motion, I'll move on, the next on my list was Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, I just would like to start by saying, I really appreciate the thorough job that was done. It was a lot of hard work, a lot of time involved. There was a lot of discussion, both within the commission and from the public at the public hearings. There was a lot of consideration of everything within the document. And so I'm pretty much on the fence of going either way with this and so my personal feelings and my personal concern always is not seeing hard work that's been done moved. So my concern would be that someone would go under a single question and understanding that there's changes to the environmental planner that this voter doesn't like. And then maybe in a situation of they're gonna appoint the town clerk and a different voter is gonna vote no on the whole thing because of that one item or a combination of other things. And then with the fire chief, if they had a personal opinion about that. That's what would make me personally uncomfortable, but I wanna remove my feelings about it because like I said, I'm either way and I kind of heard the answer from you both before. You seem confident that that wouldn't matter. You don't think it matters enough that it's not gonna cause enough controversy to upend what you're trying to do. So are you guys comfortable with a single question? If we support a single question, is that what you'd like to see?
I can speak for me and as I said earlier, probably over the course of 15 months, I got, she, Christina and I got a fairly good sense of the temper of the, of the commission and I believe we would be very comfortable. We're proud of the work we did. We tried to avoid anything that was truly controversial. We did not truly change the power structure or authority structure of the town government. And as Christina, the verb she used, we modernized it. And so we would be comfortable with one question.
Christina, you feel the same?
Yeah, and I, I thought about the exact same thing you did whereas, you know, somebody maybe has an issue with one, you know, one of the items and then they're just gonna vote no because they feel so strongly about that one item. But when I look at the list of changes we made, I feel confident that it would be a small percentage of people that may, that may feel that way. And so I think the chances of getting this passed, which I think, you know, I think we all want this to get passed, I think the chances are better of it passing if we do one single question. I would, like I said, I don't think there's any one item in there that a majority of the voters are going to be so upset about that they would vote down the entire work that we've done.
Right, and that wasn't necessarily my concern. My concern is there's enough, there's enough of a minority on this piece and enough of a minority on that piece voting no and enough minority on this piece to vote no to sink the whole thing. But you guys are a lot more involved with this clearly. You're comfortable with it, so I'm comfortable supporting it that way because I could go either way. I could give the voters the choice of the basket of six or the single. It sounds like you're comfortable with a single. I can kind of put my own personal reservation on hold and serve it up that way. And it sounds like you are comfortable with it as well. So I appreciate that feedback and that was really my only question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, as stated in the last meeting, I support one question, so I support Counselor Sullivan's motion. I think going into this meeting, what we had discussed was looking for why, you know, motivation to break it up. And Counselor Fishbine, he did put together a very thorough breakout and it was written great. But I wasn't, I just wasn't swayed as far as, on an issue-by-issue level, was any of this worth breaking out in the first place? I think there's a lot to say for there to be less confusion with one question. As Attorney Small said, you know, we can just say, here it is. This is, this is the charter with all of its revisions. We did go into this with a lot of hope that we could update and modernize, avoid all of the hot-button issues because, you know, how long has it been? Nine years or something? I don't know how many times since I've even just been up here that people have said, well, the charter is outdated or the charter this and charter that. We wanted to just be done with that once and for all and now we have an opportunity to actually just do that and be all set. I think, and to address Counselor Zandry's concern, which, which I, I understand where he's coming from, is, you know, like the last time this is, this is what happened, there was one question, not the last time, the last successful time, there was one question. But I don't see any of these issues, any of these six or any of the other ones being strong enough that even those of us up here have an issue with or disagree with of the nine of us. And we are represented, we're representing the town, we were elected by the town. It's almost akin to like a consent agenda. You know, we've, 11 people looked through this thoroughly and then the nine of us are looking through it as direct representatives of the people. And I don't see anything controversial enough to, to break it up and cause that kind of stir and commotion and confusion. So I do support the one question still, carrying over from last, last meeting and hoping that we can go forward and get this off our bucket list. Thanks.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm not real passionate about one question versus six. I guess from the perspective of openness, I'm concerned that one question just takes too much information and condenses it together. I know that we're all concerned about voter confusion. I don't, I don't believe the voters get that confused. I mean, I think the voters pick the nine people for council that they wanna see on the council and I think that's how, I don't think people get, I think you're gonna find some folks that are confused, I think the majority of them understand what they're voting on and what's in the ballot. So again, I'm not really passionate either way, but I am concerned that by crunching everything into one question that you, you end up with a result that doesn't perhaps dignify the work done by the commission. They put a lot of time and effort into this, they came up with some really substantive changes that I think are important and I just hate to see it put into one question where you can commit into a simple yes or no on the whole thing. So again, I'm supportive of either direction, whatever direction the council wants to go in. I don't think the voters get confused, I think they know what they're voting on and I think that they'll give this a good look. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was remiss last time for not thanking you for the work that you've done. So thank you and all the other members of your commission that were, that are here tonight. What I like with this is you stuck to the charge of looking at the, at the charter and it wasn't a charge of, or to look into changing our government, but it was updating the charter. And it's been mentioned many times tonight and you've done that. You have done it very well. There was one question that we didn't agree on, but that's okay. But I am in support of Counselor Sullivan's single motion. I think if the information gets out to the public, and that's gonna be the next key thing, is getting this information out to the public by every means possible, whether it's electronic or newsprint or, you know, public access TV stuffed in the electric bills, however we can do it and all that we can do, they will be informed when they get to the ballot. When they see that ballot, they can go in and they can vote because again, it was mentioned earlier, a lot of people have time but a lot of people don't and they wanna get in and vote and we're thankful that they go in and vote for us and take the time to do that. But I don't want them to get bogged down on a lot of questions and I'm afraid they, there will be some that will go in and vote but maybe not vote for this because I don't have time to read it, so I'm not going to vote for it. And I think by giving them the option of going in, reading it early enough because it'll be out there and then going in and knowing what they're voting for, that's the voter that I would like to see, an informed voter. Not a last minute, I'm gonna go to the ballot and read it. You know, I saw, I think I saw it in the newspaper, I think I might, and then I'm gonna read it again. You know, I want them plenty of time before November to read this. So I will support Counselor Sullivan on this, on his motion and again, thank you very much for the work you've done. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What date did you use?
Was it June 27th?
Seven, okay, because you, no, not second, seventh.
Seven.
You wrote seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I take off with the question that we ended with. Did the commission discuss and debate the issue of one question? And we found out tonight that they did not. They did not make that determination. I respect the people that are here tonight, the members of the commission that have expressed their opinions with regard to that, but the fact of the matter is that the commission itself did not vote on that. I got it, the no controversy, because I was in the middle of it. You know, I was there the night of Celebrate Wallingford, putting up the signs in the middle of the night. And as far as lying to the public, I don't think there was any lying. I was out there writing op-eds and speaking to people about what the revisions were and why they should be voted against. As far as people being confused by many questions, I think they're confused by one question, in my opinion, as I sit back and look at this. And I think I would be disappointed in the good work that the commission has done if they see the whole thing go down in flames as opposed to, let's say, half of the questions passing and then they can say, you know, something happened here. When we had the individual questions in 2009, the vote total was different on all of them. I don't know if anybody up here remembers what the highest yes vote was, it was the town clerk. And because of that, I think we rolled that into what we did here today or this time. And we propose as part of the charge that the town clerk be part of this. Well, I'm gonna tell you that the town clerk being part of this may be the downfall of this, if it's one question. And this is the reason why. The town clerk position has drastically changed since 2009. In 2009, the town clerk had her duties as a town clerk. We had our own staff. And since that time, we don't have staff. We directed that staff, that staff worked for us, that staff did what we asked them to do. This one question would have our now staff, which is the town clerk, fall under the mayor. And that is in violation or it steps upon the separation of powers. The mayor's staff or our staff would be directed by the mayor. Not at this mayor, but someone sitting in that chair would be able to direct our staff as to how to serve us. And that's wrong. That's a total material change from 2009. And I just thought of this over the past week and it's for that reason that I would be advocating that the public didn't approve the town clerk becoming changed. And that's an example of why this whole thing could go down in flames if it's one question. Additionally, the ethics situation, you know, anytime you touch ethics publicly, the general public gets concerned. And when we throw in to one long question that we're gonna make these changes to the ethics, which I understand that we're taking the procedure out of the charter, we're putting it in ordinance and, you know, we're gonna have to talk about that and, but that's scary to the general public, in my opinion. And that could send it down in flames. We already have a bit of controversy over the environmental planner situation. That may cumulatively, in no votes, just send one question down in flames. I'm not married to what I put together. I put it together to try and facilitate discussion and to move this process forward. That's all. So I am very much in favor of additional, of individual questions. I think that, there's gonna be explanatory text no matter what. When Counselor Sullivan said, you know, about all this text, well, there's gonna be a document that has explanatory text and it's gonna be at least a page long showing all these changes. So if we're scared of text, if we think that the public's gonna be scared of a lot of text, it's gonna be there no matter what. So that's where I am on this, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. I'm, I think the jeopardizing the dignity of the work is probably just a perspective question or argument. I, I feel that we could be jeopardizing the dignity of the work by muddying the ballot with a lot of questions. And I don't think it's, it's, I don't think the text argument works because you're essentially gonna be doubling or tripling the amount of text by adding and breaking out the extra questions, then explaining in the explanation, well, this part of the explanation's for this question, this one's for that question and so on and so forth. The, the changes were accepted by the council unanimously. So I'm, I'm surprised to hear you have a disagreement now with, with the town clerk being a part of that and, or, or a question about the ethics changes. But the, getting to the town clerk issue with the council staff, that's an administrative decision made by the council that we can end at any time. If we no longer want or trust the clerk's office to run our operations, then we won't. And we knew that, I knew that going in and a lot of my support for that, in addition to saving the money, was the, the trust that I had in, in our current town clerk, her staff and the efficiencies and money that we would save. If I felt those efficiencies were being thrown out the window or we were not being represented and our office wasn't being run, operated correctly, then I would completely endorse and support taking those duties away. The town clerk's first and primary responsibility is, is to the people and to the charter. It just so happened that she could handle our workload right now. So I'm not concerned with that, you know, the mayor, division of power and all that other stuff. And so I just, I don't get it. I, I'm just incredibly comfortable with the one question and I, I just wanted to, to kinda counter some of those, those add-on discussion points opposing such.
Counselor Sullivan?
Sorry, I could, I can't help myself. When I hear BS, I gotta react to it. Look, Counselor Fishbine paints a, a picture that would scare anyone, but it's blarney. And the reason is, we know the clerk's position is ever evolving. More and more responsibilities are going on the town clerk's shoulders. And to Counselor Laffin's point, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, when our town clerk and she came to us and said, hey, I could probably take some of the duties and I could handle them, I think many of us were of the impression, this is probably going to be short-term because the duty she has, the staff she has, can only do so much. And to Counselor Laffin's point, her time needs to be spent doing the duties and responsibilities of her job, which is town clerk first and primarily. As far as us pointing a town clerk, I think we're beyond that. I'm a part-time legislator. The mayor's full-time. He knows what our town clerk does. He knows the state laws, the state statutes around what she needs to do, when she needs to do it and the additional duties and burdens that are gonna come down the road. Now, when Mrs. Thompson finally decides she's had enough, and I hope she doesn't for a long time because she's a wonderful town clerk, but if Bill Dickinson is in that seat or any one of us or anyone out there, I would rather have the mayor- but if Bill Dickinson is in that seat, or any one of us, or anyone out there, I would rather have the mayor appoint the town clerk and do it by getting the most experienced person they can find to fill that seat, because that role is that critical. And the same goes for the fire marshal. We sat up here and appointed a fire marshal. And at that time, I, I asked, I think Chairman Parisi was running the council, why are we doing this? What do we know about a fire marshal and what they do? The chief should be doing this, not us. And sure enough, the fire marshal didn't last very long. So I, I think appointments like this are better left in the hands of full-time administrators that can do their due diligence, go through the interview process, and make sure this town has the very best candidate we can get for the position of town clerk. I have no problem with moving the town clerk under the mayor, and no one in this town should either. Now, as far as people lying, look, that happened in front of me. Somebody lied to a resident. It may not have happened where Counselor Fishbein was. I'm sure it didn't, because it wouldn't lend to his argument right now. But it happened in front of me. And I'm, I usually tell the truth. Usually.
And you qualify that, John?
All right, sometimes when I'm eight, I'll, you know, I gotta massage it a little bit when I'm late coming home, but... Simply put, people lied, because they did not want the outcome to be for that charter. And some people in this town will go to great lengths to get their way. And I was witness to that. So Craig, I'm glad you didn't hear anybody lying about the last charter revision. I certainly did, because I took about an hour and a half to try to persuade people to vote the other way with the truth, armed with the truth, not lies. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I promise that's my last bite of the apple. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Certainly. Comments from the public? Ms. Cole?
Patricia Cole, 50, 50 North Street, and a member of the Charter Revision Commission. In 2009, a lot of very good proposed changes fell victim to the political hot buttons and landmines. But that was then, and this is now. We incorporated a lot of those changes from 2009, because they were good. And almost everything that you all asked for is in our draft. And I think a single ballot question would send that message to the voters, that there are no landmines, there are no hot-button issues, and that this is a good revised charter. Attorney Small has written very good explanatory text, and I hope that you'll accept it and consider one question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Daryl Stancun, 18 Old Village. I use, I'm using this microphone, because the other microphone, when I was talking, the volume went down lower. So hopefully it doesn't happen on this one while I'm talking and asking some questions. Basically, why don't you guys send out a letter with this proposal to all the residents in the mail? That way, they could look it over before November 7th. And they'll get it in the mail, add it with whatever else you're going to mail it out with, as a, you know, with the electric bill, like Laterno said, maybe with a bill. But add it, that way the resident can read it at home. Because trying to rely on the internet, or, you know, the website, or whatnot, people just, you know, are caught up with a lot of things in their lives. So I think it's easier if you guys do send it out to all the residents in town through a bill of some kind, whether it's electric bill, you know, stick it in there. That way they have time before November 7th to read it over. And I think it's very important to put all the information on there that Mr. Fish, Counselor Super, Counselor Fishbein was saying in his proposal. Put it all in there. Let the people read it all. Don't just make it at one question that... I was listening to it over and over in the audience, and I'm like, you know, that question didn't even make any sense. So adopting the laws of, you know, something else, and it just jumps into different questions within the question. Don't try to shortcut it, because trying to do that is going to confuse the voters. And that's going to make them think, oh my gosh, what is, I can't even answer that question, because it's too confusing. So add all the detailed information to the voters. I wouldn't do it at the booth. A lot of people just want to get in there and vote, absolutely. They got to go to work, they got to go home, they got to go shopping. So try and rely on the voter. You have to understand, it's not that they don't care, it's not that they, you know, want to just sit there and, and just vote and get out. Just a lot of people have got a lot of things going on in their lives. So as a town resident, I would suggest you all just mail it out beforehand. Don't wait till November and do it. Give it, you know, maybe a month or two beforehand, maybe in September, to the residents in the mail with all the information about it. And I was wondering if I could get a copy of that tonight, because this is the first I'm hearing about this. If I could please get a copy tonight. If I knew about the meeting, I would have been there, Laffin. So I knew nothing about it, and yes, the public cares. Chairman Savoni, I know you mentioned that the public wasn't there. Well, you know what, I would have been there, I didn't even know about the meeting. So that's the thing, you can't just put it out in the web.
I don't think I said that.
Somebody up there said it, I think it was you.
I'm pretty certain it wasn't me.
Somebody said it up there. So if you want to just find out, you're the chairperson, but somebody said it tonight, and you're the chair, so if you could direct it to your fellow counselors, then find out. So my point being made, I'm not here to argue with you about, just look into it, someone said that tonight. But the bottom line is just don't be all this resistance with the public on top of it, you know? I mean, we're taxpayers, you guys, you know, are elected officials for this. You are supposed to represent the town, the residents. You guys work for us. So you're trying to find out what is the best for us, not about you guys, okay? So that's number one. And number two, going back to my main points, mail it out to the residents. Let them know the information in a bill of some kind. A lot of people still don't know how to work the internet. You do have some internet-savvy people, but again, best way is when they could feel the paper and read it. And so that, with that point, and also with the voting, you know, you can't just let them try to rush it. Again, they got to go to places, work, whatever their duties that they have to do in life. So I would give all the detailed information ahead of time, is what I'm trying to say. And the other points to be made, I mean, I, I didn't hear about this rumor thing back in 2009. This whole thing is ridiculous. Time to be back and forth about talking about some rumor of Taste of Wallingford about voting on something, it's really senseless. I didn't hear about the rumor, but it's ridiculous. Anyway, here, here we go, the mic went down lower. So this mic went down lower, too. The point, this mic went down low. And this is the second time.
We can hear you.
Okay, now it's, is it going back up?
We can hear you.
Okay, the mic went down lower. So, the, the problem is, I didn't hear anything about Taste of Wallingford with this ridiculous, whatever, thing about the ballot. So that's another point. And then the other suggestion, I think Barbara Thompson and her crew do a great job downtown. I think they do a great job in here. But honestly, leaving the powers to one person, the mayor, to, you know, dictate who should have that position, I don't think that should be. As a town resident, I don't, I don't agree with that, because you're just giving more power to the mayor. It's no offense at all to Barbara Thompson. Again, she does a great job, her and the people in there work hard. But I really think that should be a panel of voting who the town clerk should be. I absolutely agree with Fishbein on that. And he does get cut short a lot by you, Chairman Savoni. You do cut him short, I see it, you do it. You leave him left behind in the woods. So if you could try to work on that. So basically, that's it.
Do you have any other advice for me?
I think taking away the powers, I mean, giving more power to the mayor is, whether it's Mayor Dickinson, whoever it is, it has nothing to do with Dickinson, but you're giving too much power to one person. And that's what you nine are all up there for, is make decisions. And it's easy to do for a town clerk of who you all want. And you guys are voted in from, you know, whoever it's going to be voted in again in November. But it's your duties to try to figure out who, you know, should be in the clerk's office or any other spot. So I think that's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? I don't see any hands, so I'm going to bring it back to the council. And Counselor Fishbein, did you have anything else to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. You know, I first got on the council, Counselor Econopolis sat at the end of the row. And he used the staff a lot to do FOI requests and to try and get information. And, you know, I agree that if the town clerk was just the town clerk, it should be the mayor. It should be a civil service position, it should be like a regular position. But we have a hybrid. I don't know of any other town that operates this way. So the, the scenario would be something like, you know, 10 years from now, John Smith is the mayor, and one of the counselors asked the town clerk in her role as council staff to do something. And the mayor calls her up and says, what are you doing? Well, I'm doing this for this counselor. Well, don't do it, I'm your boss. That's what we're left with. And that's not, I don't think that's our intent. And we've never talked about refunding that position that we got rid of a few years ago. That's never been discussed. If we're going to have that, we just finished the budget. You know, if we're going to be putting $45,000 back in the budget for staffing, I'd like to know about it. But that's the concern, is that we end up with the mayor, whoever that might be, hiring our staff and supervising our staff. And I'm not comfortable with that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You all set?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure. Mayor?
Just, just to that point, we, we do change funding during the course of a year. And if there was a need for adding staff, certainly you would be making a recommendation that, you know, that there needed to be staff for the council. And whether that's a part-time or full-time position would be discussed. And we handle those things in that manner. Just speaking for myself, if it ended up being some kind of an issue where I felt the town clerk didn't have the time to do something, or somehow conflict was, I'd tell you people. You know, I, I'm very conscious of the council legislative versus executive branch jurisdictions and responsibilities. And I honor that along with all of you, as far as what our respective duties are. So I don't see anything here that can't be dealt with if there's a problem.
Mayor, while, while I have your attention, as, as I seem to recall, if there is a personnel job description that gets changed in government, it comes before the council. Always does. And in fact, if there is a significant change in the clerk's duties as a result of the charter revision being accepted by the vote of the public, I would imagine that the town clerk's job description would have to be revisited, and it would have to come before the council. In addition, the current council office does have at least one staff position that is dedicated to supporting the council. And I, I can tell you that since we've been without our own secretary running our office, that I have not at all felt that we have been short-staffed in terms of the council's needs. So, Counselor Chertel?
Quick question. Steve, Christina, you had three public hearings, just, I just want to go back to that.
Correct.
How many members of the public came to those hearings? I don't know if you have exact numbers, but do you remember, was, was it packed?
No, no. It was, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, one of the hearings, I think, had one, one person from the public.
For combined, for all three hearings, one person came?
One person came into one of the...
To one.
Into one of the three here.
There was a single individual that came.
Okay.
I don't believe it ever topped seven or eight people in any of them, but the most highly attended was maybe seven, I would guess.
Okay. And then we had two public hearings. We had at least one, I don't know if we had a second one. So there have been four or five, I can't remember the second one, but, but at least four public hearings on this in the last 14 and a half months since your commission began. We get letters on everything. We get letters about, don't cut the school budget, don't do this. I think we've gotten one, or a couple of letters from one person about the PUC issue. That's the only, only communication we, that I've seen as a counselor about the charter. Maybe I can be corrected by anybody, I don't recall any other letters. So I just want to make those points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. If there is no other discussion, then I think it'd be an appropriate time to call the roll on the motion on the table.
Okay. Okay. Everybody ready? Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tasta?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. The remaining item is...
Thank you.
Thank you. The explanatory text, I do believe we need to vote on that. Am I correct, Attorney Small?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the explanatory text, the proposed revisions to the town charter as drafted by Attorney Small? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, pick your second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I appreciate the, the proposed language as submitted. I just had a, that second sentence in the first one. You know, I try to put my public hat on, if I can do that. And it, I, I think it was that clause deemed necessary that just jumped out at me.
Where are you? I don't understand.
I'm at the very first...
The third sentence.
Very first paragraph, the, yes, the third sentence.
Third sentence, okay.
So, the intention is to attach this document to a copy of the revised charter, or merely to disseminate this document in and of itself? Because that deemed...
I don't think it's attached to it.
Okay. So that, that clause deemed necessary, well, who deemed necessary? You know, it just, I just had a, and that's why in my proposed thing, I pulled that out and tried to soften it. But, you know, that's my comment. I mean, that's, I just, I thought that people would be scared away from the whole thing based upon stuff like that. But that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Anyone else on the council? Comments from the public?
Oh my God.
What exactly is the draft explanatory text?
Madam Clerk, do you have an extra copy?
Do you have a copy of the...
I have a copy, you can see, but I don't have an extra copy.
And what about the other discussion? Can I get a copy of, with the zoning?
Can you, can you pass this forward?
I got it.
Oh, he's got one. He's got it. That's, that's just on town record. You, you get a copy in a minute if you wish.
All right, so this is the text that's proposed?
That's the explanatory text that's going to be published. That's the explanatory text that's going to be published and available for the public.
All right, can I ask the panel, um, if I can, like five minutes to read this and come back up with some questions on this? Because this is the first time getting attention to it.
Mr. Stancuna, this is our last item of public business.
Okay, but I just got the information now while we're talking. So how am I gonna read and look at you and ask the questions? I'm not a robot.
I, I would agree with you that you're not a robot.
No one is, but I'm saying, here we go with the mic again. The mic is down. Um, nobody could read all this and then have questions from it. I just got this 10 seconds ago.
What we can do is, is this.
I mean, anywhere else.
In the interest of giving you, Mr. Stancuna, every available opportunity, the council does have some business in executive session. And so what we will do is, um... We will suspend or table voting on this item until after we go into executive session.
Yeah, that's...
That will give you the opportunity to study and come back prepared.
Well, I appreciate that because you know that being a lawyer, you can't just go to court and get information and, oh yeah, let's go over this. So, you know, it's not, wasn't logical, but now you're being logical.
Sometimes that happens, but...
No, you get a break in court.
Risk of another discussion. Uh, Vice Chairman Laffin?
Sounds good.
Uh, well, this, this is all part of the, the record and, and the information that goes out before meetings. I, I motion, uh, to table this vote until after executive session.
Is there a second? Um, okay, that motion fails.
All right, so just, I'll ask the questions here then. I'll try to deal with getting this information and appreciate the chair trying to get a break from it, but no one wants to second the motion. So the removal of elected officials would be deleted, um, no legal authority provision. So what exactly does that mean?
There's a provision in the charter that currently provides for a process by which elected officials can be removed. It was the analysis of the law department that there is no legal authority for that provision. So the provision has been removed by the Charter Revision Commission.
So would there be like a committee then, or just nobody would be able to do that type of action?
It'd be removed from the charter.
It would be removed from the charter.
That's correct.
And with the classified service system, can you elaborate what that is on number four?
The classified service system is the way we employ, uh, positions in town hall. It's the, uh, Attorney Small, maybe you can help me with an expert...
It's a process of recruiting, interviewing, hiring, um, employees. It's called the classified service system.
And is that like a human, oh, good, the mic is up. Thank you, whoever's doing that. Um, so would that include the human resources then that would be involved with the hiring? And, um, and how many employees they need and what type of process do they do with that?
The human resources department handles that. That's correct.
Okay, and then something like that, is that out in the papers for these job opportunities? How do you, um, put this out to the public that these are...
You know, I'm not in charge of human resources, but they advertise for it in a variety of man- manners, manner.
And then, uh, with number five, uh, with the revised charter for the fire marshal and the deputy fire marshals. Um, so that means town council, then the, the nine counselors would be able to, um, appoint and vote on who would be the, the fire marshal?
Currently, the fire marshal is appointed by the council.
And that's one or two? Cause there's two on here. There's a fire marshal and a deputy fire marshal.
Both.
And then how often is that process being made within...
When they need to be replaced. When one leaves, we, the council has to appoint the replacement.
How long are those terms?
They're not, they're not durational.
Oh, so are they employed jobs where they get paid and...
They're full-time jobs.
Okay, so these are basically if they take a retirement?
No. So what currently happens, Mr. Stancuna, is when there's an opening in the fire marshal's office, whether it's the fire marshal or the deputy fire marshal, the council has to appoint the replacement. Um, what the, the charter proposes, the revised charter proposes to change is to have the, the fire chief appoint the fire marshal.
Oh, so the fire chief appoints the fire marshal?
And in fact, currently, the fire chief assists the council in managing the fire marshal's office.
Now, is that for all the fire chiefs in town or is there, is that just...
There's one fire chief in town.
There's just one fire chief in town. Okay, and then with the ethics on number six, is that some kind of committee or something with the reorganizing?
That would be determined by the ordinance that we pass.
And what was that? What ordinance?
The, the change, if the charter is changed, then it will, the council will be tasked with addressing the ethics provisions by ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? There being none, bring it back. Oh, sir?
Microphone.
My name's Mike McConie. I live in Five Collin Court in Wallingford, Connecticut.
Gotta get to the mic.
Speak into the mic.
Please.
Thought I had a big voice. Um, Mike McConie, Five Collin Court in Wallingford, Connecticut. And, and please excuse me if I'm, if I'm out of order here. But I had a question in regards to the article that was written in the Record Journal here this past Friday on the, uh, on the power plant down on East Street that is, that is currently under construction. Uh, there was some mention in there about some out-of-town contractors that are performing that work. And I'm just a little concerned as to why in a state that is experiencing some difficulties with our, uh, work opportunities for our fellow residents that we'd be looking at utilizing an outside construction firm when we have many capable firms. Um, I'm sure here in the state of Connecticut that would meet the licensing requirements. Um, and I just was curious if we had any answers or opinions on that.
Um, while your question is currently out of order, we do typically at the beginning of the meeting have 20 minutes of public question and answer period where you can ask a question like that. I'm just gonna tell you that it's not, that's a privately owned facility. And so we, we are not contracting for the work. The work has been contracted for by, uh, what's the name of the power company mayor? Is it, um...
Ellis Power, Wallingford Energy, whichever name, Wallingford Energy or Ellis Power.
So it's not, it's not a town project.
Wouldn't have any of those type of discussions with that particular firm when we, you know, leased the land back to them to, to do the work, uh, on that particular facility?
I, I don't believe we have that kind of supervision over the project.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And I, I apologize. I was a few moments late today. I had to pick my, my kids up from school.
Sure. Well, next time you have a question, come to the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
I do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Onto item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. There being no other business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn is on the table. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing... Counselor Chertel, you are in the significant minority and you can... And you can continue to have your own meeting. I declare this meeting adjourned.